Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, gentlemen.
I'd like to call some county council record meeting for Tuesday, August 13th. The auditor, can you hear me?
Yes.
We're trying to do some adjustments with the microphone so that the audience can hear us up here. Hopefully, that's working.
Thank you.
Those all standing for the implications of this meeting. Can you get into your seat?
Let us pray. Our dear, kind, heavenly Father, we do thank you for bringing us together again to the table to discuss the business of the people. We invite your presence and ask that you dwell with us and help us to make wise decisions. Give us kind hearts, loving hearts, and help us to be considerate of what's before us and what our responsibilities are for the people who we serve. We acknowledge you as being the one in whom we live and move and have our being. We thank you for making us stewards of the blessings that you've blessed us with. Help us, dear God, to be good stewards and help us to have a kind heart for those who are less fortunate than others, the downtrodden, for those that were in desperate need. Help us to not turn a deaf ear or a blinded eye. Help us to listen, listen, and receive, and do what we know is right to do in your sight. These are all blessings. We thank you, and in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pray my reading.
This is the prayer of the United States of America, and as we are rebelling for those who stand, one nation under our [inaudible]. Intervenable with liberty and justice for all.
Have motion approved. Have any change to be addressed?
No, sir, there are no changes.
Have motion approved. The move is properly stated that we approve our agenda in discussion. You're in all in favor of that? Have a motion to approve our [inaudible]. So, move. The move is properly stated that we approve our minutes from our record meeting for July 23rd in discussion. You're in all in favor of this, aye? Before we get back into the rest of our agenda, you'll notice that we've got a very large audience today. Thanks, everybody, for coming. If you're here about any of the rezoning requests, there are no public hearings on those. But if there's anyone here for the rezoning requests, once these are over, to welcome the stage for the whole meeting, that's no problem. But if the only reason you're here is for the rezoning requests, if you would please leave to welcome the stage so that we can get some of the people that are out in the foyer and downstairs. Land use matters and rezoning requests. RZ number 12023.
RZ 2413 is at 7:25 South St. Paul Church Road. The applicant is St. Paul Development LLC, represented by Tyler Dunlap, Mr. Dunlap, this year, this evening, I see, our guest agent. This is a request to resent approximately forty acres portion of this property for agricultural conservation and neighborhood commercial to residential nine and neighborhood commercial. This is the property in its entirety. Currently, it is an agricultural field and it's under cultivation, but from a zoning standpoint, a small portion of the property is on neighborhood commercial with the balance of an agricultural conservation. It is in the point set Electronic Combat Riskionability District. This is a noise notification district. Any future rezonement on this property for residential purposes will require a noise notification signed at the entrance to the subdivision. The reason that it's asking to resent from neighborhood commercial to neighborhood commercial is because we want to modify the shape of that neighborhood commercial district. If you look at the map on the screen up here, you'll see a longer, narrower piece of neighborhood commercial proposed as opposed to the square piece with a balance of the property proposed to go to residential nine for a future residential development. This is a concept plan. It doesn't tie the developer to this particular plan, but there are some development limitations on this property, and the public sewer service is not available here. So, any development on this property will be required. As you said, it tanks the primary driving factor for requesting R9 zoning isn't so that they can have smaller lots in terms of area, but so that they can have narrower lot widths so that they take better advantage of the road drainage. Every lot is going to be at least seventeen thousand five hundred square feet or larger because that is the minimum necessary for separate service. This property would have to go through a major subdivision process with planning permission. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan says, in this particular instance, it is in the suburban development district adjacent to the military protection planning district. The comprehensive plan is supportive of going to residential designation, but our concerns with this property needing to military protection are somewhat mitigated by the fact that they cannot actually get to R9 destinies because of lack of sewer service. So, although theoretically they could give you nine thousand square foot lots, from a practicality standpoint, those lots will be at least a half an acre in size, which helps mitigate some of our concerns as to impede the ownership operation. Planning permission did recommend approval of this request, though the public sewer service not being available on such a property doesn't mean that any lots that are created do have to be served by on-site separate service, which does make those lots larger than that minimum requirement threshold. How do you answer any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Rubin?
Move the first read. Second, Chairman, and also would like to request that we change the request from R9 to R15. We haven't spoken to the developer. I don't think of that also. I'll feel about R15 and R9.
I too. Is the developer, Mr. Dunlap, okay with that?
I do have another question. I know sewer is not available, so they would have to have their own set. Each unit would have to have its own septic service. What about water?
We didn't have public water service there. That is available. And from a best asset point, we are perfectly happy with going to R15. In fact, our original report to planning permission said R15 would be more appropriate for R9 works, so that's perfectly right.
Mr. Chairman, I've talked to Mr. Dunlap in the past about development in that area it is in, my district. He's bringing the kind of development that citizens would like to see and I'm in full support of.
Mr. Chairman, and I would like to acknowledge some of the members, some of the neighbors, residents, the living area, may have found letters. I was not able to respond. It was another long enough turnaround, but if you're present, I would like for you to know that I did receive the letter, and it was well received, and I was glad to see that every letter that I received was in favor of the development, and I also received yours, Mr. Dunlap. So, thank you for it. Shout out to us to make informed decisions. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, second, to approve first reading with the change from R9 to R15. Is that correct? Any further discussion? You're in all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
RZ 1213 is approved, first reading. RZ 2409.
There have been no changes to this request since second reading public. Now, we continue to recommend approval of this document, your gentleman.
Move the third read. The move is properly stated that we have third reading in discussion. You're in all in favor, please say aye. There are aye. RZ 24-12.
2410 on that?
I'm 10, I'm sorry.
RZ 2410 is to rezone from R15 to AC. There have been no changes since second reading. We continue direct.
Move for third reading. The move is properly stated that we have third reading on RZ 24-10 in discussion. You're in none, please say aye. And finally, RZ 24-12.
We continue to recommend approval of this request. There have been no changes since second reading, so it would be from R9 to AC on that 13th.
Move. Sorry. Remove the property section that we have third reading on RZ 24-12. Excuse me, all in favor, please say aye. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Order number 24.009, Brian. And prior to second, council taking second reading on this ordinance, there will be a second hearing. Mr. Chairman. Chairman, this is the first, the second reading on RZ 24, what is Brian, Councilor. Yes, Mr. White.
Mr. Chairman, I want to suggest that we pull this ordinance down and go back to the drawing board because there's several problems with this ordinance. That is my suggestion. You, Mr. Chairman, exercise that. If we choose not to, there are going to be a number of points of order raised that can be avoided. This process was not done correctly or appropriately, and so I am suggesting that we pull it down, go back to the drawing board, and bring something back that all council members can feel good about. Just a suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Washington, I just have one question. At each of the fiscal tax meetings when this was initially presented, and today, when it was presented with the drafts, with all of the changes that have been suggested, you didn't say a word. Why is that? Why couldn't you have brought that in the committee, and we could have discussed them and probably possibly worked them out?
Because, Mr. Chairman, I felt like that conversation should have taken place before this ordinance was introduced to us, as you and the councilmen from Patriot Park and Wilson Hall operated without the indulgence and engagement of other council members even meeting with the parliamentarian, which was inappropriate. If those conversations had taken place with me being a part of that, then we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Mr. Washington, when Mr. Edens asked staff to come up with an ordinance for council to come up with their own parliamentary rules, that's what staff did. I had no input in that whatsoever. Not one second of time did I have any input in putting that ordinance together. It was done by staff. The first time I saw it, I sent it to Mr. McGee and to Mr. Edens because they're on the fiscal tax committee, asking them for their input. When I received their responses back, it was then sent to everyone, so everyone received it at the same time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Edens does not have that authority.
Mr. Ed to instruct staff.
Staff can only be instructed by council. He does not have that authority.
We give you ask staff to do things all the time, Mr. Washington.
I don't ask staff to create ordinances. All right, my office.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a point of privilege. Councilman has made a suggestion, and if he wants to change that to a motion, I'm ready to second that.
So, move. Second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm still in the dark here. Couple minutes ago, we was talking about adjusting our rules and so forth, and we said that we operate under the current additional law of rules of order. I asked you directly that question, and you said, yes, we operate under law of rules of order. Then, all of a sudden, this big change come up that I don't even know anything about. I didn't input in it. And you were meeting, you never told me about it. So, I'm sitting here now just wondering where did this come from? If we was going to operate under law of rules of order, and we've been operating under law of rules of order ever since I've been on council for nineteen and a half years, even when I was the chair, when we operate under law of rules of order, and when Mr. Edens was chair, when we operated under law of rules of order, when Ms. McGee was chair, when we operated under law of rules of order. So, all of a sudden, this mysterious document shows up, and you're saying that you had nothing to do with it. How could you not have anything to do with it? How can staff just come up and say, we are going to develop another ordinance that going to show us how to conduct meeting? Where did they get that authority to do that? So, I'm just curious. Why are we going away from law of rules of order? It has always been acceptable. It has always been effective. I use it during [inaudible] as chairman during a very [inaudible] meeting. So, what is it? What is it? Tell me why we got away from it. Law of rules of order, my understanding is it's not made for small legislative bodies such as ours. Law of rules of order is for large bodies such as the upcoming Democratic Party Convention in Chicago. And all we're trying to do is simplify it with the rules of order, county council, as other counties have done, as recommended by South Carolina Association of Counties. And that's all we did. We asked staff to come up with and draft, and it was presented, and everybody can have input in it. I'm not trying to force this down anybody's throat.
Chairman, what I have been told by members in the community who have spoken with some of you sitting up here today is that these rules were devised to control this councilman. Remember.
That's not true. That's not true.
That's what I've been told.
Well, I don't know who those people talked to. They actually didn't talk to me.
And, Mr. Chairman, if we proceed with these rules, which are inappropriate and illegal...
They're not illegal.
I assure you that these new rules, which are considerably smaller than Robert's rules of order...
And it's...
I assure you, Mr. Chairman, I have the floor right now. But I assure you that the book club has already mastered these rules, and I would suggest and strongly encourage that we pull these rules down and do it the right way, but if you choose not to, let's start by recognizing these rules because I have several points of order that I will raise. We can do this the hard way, Mr. Chairman, or we can do this the easy way.
We got a motion, second, on the floor. We got a motion, second, on the floor to pull this down. All in favor? Mr. Chairman, I'm not finished yet. Please. We are. I'm still wondering who gave staff the authority to develop this document? They just went on their own and said, we are going to develop something that you guys have to accept. Did they do that?
We don't have to accept it. It was a...
What I'm saying is, Mr. Chairman, who told them to do that? You know, Mr. Administrator, did you tell the staff to develop this document?
Councilman Bacon, the instructions to develop this policy was actually done in county council meetings, where Councilman Edens actually represented the document from the Association of Counties, model rules, and was asked to review that and then come back with a recommendation. That was then reviewed.
That is true. Okay, come back with a recommendation, but did they say you was going to adopt it? We had already had first reading on it. So, where, you know, and my thing is, again, we have our county attorney who's sitting there, and he's developing this document. Where did he get the authority from to do that? Did he get it from you, Mr. Administrator? So, you told him to do that. And so, then you're saying that Councilman Edens told you to do it?
Yes, sir, that's what it's talking about.
But why? I've been on council for nineteen and a half years. No one asked me, nobody. Is my input important? Do I? I mean, I hope that my services are valued, that you were just not willing to really forget me or my colleagues over there at Cal Washington. You didn't know about it. Why was we excluded from this meeting that you had that's going to impact on me and Cal Washington?
As for that, we were instructed by county council to present a draft to consider or to counsel the body to consider, and so that's what we done. We didn't expect this to be a final draft. We knew there was a lot of work to be done with it, but based on a number of criteria of this information that we presented back to you based on direction, we believe we received it from county council.
You're saying you got a draft?
Yes, sir.
But this is a draft?
Yes.
So, we've had already had first reading on it, and now we're going to have second reading on it, but it's a draft. When are we going to vote on this draft? You're talking about it's a draft. This is about to be a law. It's about to be law. Maybe it was a draft that was presented to us and sold. Sold that [inaudible] in this meeting, and everybody had a copy of it, and that's why when every email that was sent out was to suggest changes that you wanted to make, stuff that you thought was inappropriate, that was the time to do it. And in every meeting, neither one of y'all said a word. Not one word. Well, Mr. Chairman, let's say this. I know the game that's being played, okay? So, you are not that smart. Now, you wanted to have this in the committee when you also had it on the regular council meeting. Now, why would we discuss something in committee where three of you can control what's happening on this ordinance or this draft instead of bringing it out to full council, which is on the agenda, and talk about it? See, that's the game that's being played, okay?
That's how we conduct business, Mr. Washington.
We always have things done in committee. Mr. Bibian, am I right or wrong?
You're right, and when the opportunity came to vote on it, of course, I wouldn't second it so that we could have the opportunity to have a public hearing, a public meeting, public input, and then be able to move forward one way or the other. Yeah, so, we did discuss it, and a motion was made, but it was not seconded of the three members, and so that's why we are discussing it now.
So, you were a part of this room?
Well, I'm on the fiscal tax and property.
Okay, yes.
Yes, that committee. I'm on that committee, yes.
Did it ever occur to you that it would be nice that all the council members put away at this?
Well, you, okay, now, my understanding, my understanding is that piece of information was handled as any other information that goes to committee. Yeah, I received my copy like anybody else, like all the committee members that received it, and after the committee receives it, it goes out to the other members. But, of course, I didn't get a chance to do my comparative analysis that I would like to make, so that's why I was willing to let first reading pass to give me the opportunity to, you know, study it more, and so now, here we are now. But I don't have any, I don't think that me receiving it was undercover or anything because I'm a part of that committee, but it's my understanding that every council member received the copy.
Let me say this. We have never had problems that we have today, okay? Let's be honest. Now, all of a sudden, I see a large audience here, and when I look at that audience, I see that's about seventy-five or eighty percent black. We have never had this problem where we want to control the behavior of black people because that's what this ordinance is all about, and that's why it was created, and that's why you came out, but you were smart enough, because I challenged you and went on TV about it, about you having this rule that all of a sudden, public comments are going to be thirty minutes. That means that ten people, if they took their three minutes, ten people could talk. That's it. And after that, no more conversation. You know that was wrong, and that's why you got rid of it, you got exited. Oh, yeah, you wrong. You're wrong in a lot of parts. Oh, yeah? Because this language was removed three weeks ago. Several council members, after the meeting Tuesday night, expressed to staff that we didn't want to change public hearing. So, that was changed before you even got on TV, Mr. Bailey. Oh, it was? Yes, it was. Oh, okay. Good. Good, so you're saying it was changed, but why was it implemented from the start? It was a recommendation based on other councils from different states. It was... Why would you do something from the start that you know is ridiculous? It was a draft. It was ridiculous for you to even put that in there. I didn't put it in there. Who put it in there? Staff put it together. So, Mr. Bryan, you're saying you put it in? It's a draft.
Chairman, staff put that in there based on other counties that we reviewed, primarily Charleston, Richland, and Sparkville, and Richland and Sparkville both had that exact language in there. We knew that that was going to be a point of conversation for council, but it was already in the other two. We were reviewing them and said, okay, we'll put this in there. That is, it was never intended to be the final answer.
So, when you put it in there, you thought it was a good idea, but then the public comments turned it in.
I knew it was worth the conversation by council, yes.
Yeah. So, and then you wanted to control who would speak by saying, yes, by saying, if someone had come up and said, I vote for this, then everyone who come up after that, you want to control and say, do you vote for it? And if they say, yeah, well, it's already been decided, we don't want to hear from you. Next one, do you vote for it? Yeah, it's already been decided, we don't want to hear from you. That's the craziness that we would have. Now, come on, let's be for real. But again, I say this. It's because of the people that's in here that all of a sudden you wanted to come up with a control. You want people to come in here and sit and be quiet, they can't even look at each other, they can't even talk to each other, they can't make motions. That's what you wanted. That's nothing but Jim Crow. You bring it back. Jim Crow. That's cold. That's what you were doing. And now, because it was called out, now you realize how stupid it was for you to do that. So, come on, let's be for real.
Mr. Chairman, before the vote, can we get to the public hearing?
Come on, before the vote.
Public has a side.
There's a motion.
Oh, how can we have a motion when we get a public hearing? Don't we have to have the public hearing first? We have to deal with the motion first.
I've already called the question, and Mr. Bailey is continuing to talk back to the question, yes, two. You can continue. I approve. Mr. Washington made a motion, Bibian seconded it, and it was to remove this from the table and go back to the drawing board. All in favor of doing that, please say aye. All opposed? I would like a roll call. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Washington.
By name?
I said, Mr. Washington. Yeah, I made?
Pull it down.
Is that a yeah or a nay?
Yes, sir.
Pull it down. Right. Nay? Nay?
Yes.
Right. So a motion fails. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be recognized for my point of view. Mr. Washington, I'm not going to rush into action. This guy's agenda. Uh, we're going to introduce this to the audience. Anything you have to say once we get into the, uh, motion and second, you can have that discussion. Mr. Bryan, please introduce the audience. All others not to interfere.
Mr. Chairman, what you have before you against ordinance, uh, that was drafted to the fiscal protection property committee on July the third. Since then, some proposed changes have been made. The changes are in section two dash fifty-nine F. The word money was changed to private. So the section now reads, "Mr. McCurious can be distributed to members of county council for electronic presentations related to agenda items six, menus matters and rejoining requests, seven, of the public hearings, eight, new business, nine, old business, ten, media reports, eleven, reports from county council members on other meetings, trainings, annual conferences, twelve, monthly reports, and thirteen, county administrator's report must be received by the correct council by noon on Friday before a regular scheduled meeting for distribution to the council prior to the meeting." Another change was made to section two dash fifty-nine G, which now reads, "No public participation will be allowed until completion of the agenda items and the county administrator's court and remarks. But discussion or remarks will be accepted at the full business of the meeting is completed. Each person may speak up to three minutes. Public hearings are accepted for this invitation." Another change was made to section two dash fifty-nine H, where a sentence was added. That section now reads, "The public is expected to comply with the rules of conduct and meeting information displayed on the screens in the council chamber. The chair should preserve order decorum and cases of service of board disorderly conduct in the chamber or the lobby. They cause the same to be cleared." The only other change was the addition of the signatures and the procedural history.
Prior to public discussion and motions by council, public hearing will be held. Public hearing is now open, Mr. Chairman? Yes? One hour. What is the public hearing going to consist of? The public has no knowledge of the document. They've not seen the document. This is backwards. This is backwards, and this is... Are you finished with Mr. Bird, Mr. Chairman? Because I have the floor. You recognize me?
I recognize you.
Okay, because I have the floor, not Mr. Bird. The public has no knowledge of what this illegal document contains. But you're asking them to come and speak on something that they know nothing about. As I told you earlier, we can go down this road, but it's not going to end well. Because this is wayward. And the definition of wayward, Mr. Chairman? Something that is not right. Now, you're asking them for a public hearing. I'm sure you may get some comments, but they don't have the comprehensiveness of this document. They don't understand how their rights have been limited and how you've attempted to limit their rights. I still have the floor, Mr. Chairman. How you've attempted to limit the rights of council members because you don't want to deal, you and others on this council don't want to deal with the real issues facing this county. But you can proceed with your public hearing. But let me put you on notice. As soon as that is done, I want to be recognized because I have several points of order that we're going to need to deal with, okay? That's right. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak, please proceed to the mic. State your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Myra Washington. Um, I would just like to state for the record that I am a resident of Sumpford County. Um, regardless of any other affiliation I have and as such I have, I'm entitled to every right, um, as any other resident. And that is to voice my opinion. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you're listening or if you're not looking this way.
I hope this means...
Now, I understand the public does not have access to this document. But what they do have access to is the minutes from the prior meetings. Um, and there is nowhere in that meeting that Mr. Edens, Councilman Edens, is referencing that authorized this staff to do what it did. Councilman Washington, in that same meeting, reiterated a previous request per Roberts Rules of Order to be, to be provided with a bound copy of this body's special rules, standing rules, ordinances, and bylaws, constitutions. You know how many months ago that was? It still hasn't been provided. So they were quick to act on that. And if you yourself said that you changed that warning about the public comment uh, period being shortened three weeks ago, then how come it didn't come until Friday? That's when it was received by the councilman from Wash, from, uh, Councilman Washington. So which is, did it happen three weeks ago when it, when it first came out on the same night? How could that even be possible?
That's weird.
How is that even possible? And when I have figured out throughout this whole process and learned unraveling a lot, takes a lot of hard work. When you have to backtrack because you're looking at something logically. But you have to understand, when people are deceitful, it's hard to unravel. But, you know, I'm glad that we're going to get to see more of who and what we are dealing with in this, in this body. Because council members cannot direct staff. That's in your ordinance. That's a violation. You know that, Mr. Administrator. You don't take orders from Councilman Edens. You don't take orders from any of these individual council members. You take your directives from the body. And the body did not direct you to do that. Mr. Councilman Washington said that same night, or even the previous meeting, that all you needed to do was add latest addition to your current ordinance. And the ref, the, the resolution you were seeking was unnecessary. Every member present, minus, uh, the council, Councilman Bailey, agreed to that because he wasn't here. He came back the following week wondering what happened to Roberts Rule. We're still waiting for that directive. You heard it. It's, you didn't do that. And you know why you didn't do it? Because you were already following another directive that came subsequent to that. You knew when he raised the issue that you were doing away with Roberts Rule. And I'll tell you this. Every source that you referenced, that you used for these new rules, state in their document that they follow Roberts Rules of Order. Because what you prepare here doesn't address every scenario and situation. So what is the parliamentary authority then? It's not in your ordinance, it's not in state law. So what are you going to do? Make it up as you go along? I think you get the picture. But if you want to see the rest of the picture, we can keep going.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Alexandra Batson. Uh, Mr. Chairman and Council, I just want to make my father aware of something just so he can clarify if he needs to, Mr. Chairman. The last motion that was voted out, uh, can you make sure you meant to say yea or no? Because I don't think you understood.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Doctor. Uh, I did have that down to go back to talk to.
Okay.
Could we, um, do that a little after this public hearing?
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Washington.
My name is Cindy Brooks-Parrish. I'm a native of Sumpford County, Montana. I moved there three and a half years ago, glad to be home. I worked for the city of Dune for thirty-three years. I am now retired. I have been buried in Washington by getting involved in Sumpford's politics. I've listened to a whole lot of stuff. I've met a whole lot of people. I am here to tell you that I'm ashamed. I'm thoroughly ashamed of the way you guys translate this. I've been a county council, I've done county council for thirty-three years. This is ridiculous. And why is there not any public television here for all your constituents that cannot make it here? And don't tell me about YouTube. Everybody don't get YouTube. But if you watch TV. So my thing is this. Y'all need to get it together. You didn't get here by yourself. You got here by votes. And you need to realize that you can get out of here by votes. And thank you for your time.
I have, uh... Good afternoon, my name is Joe Austin. I'm from, uh, Rimmen area, from Denton Road. And I have just a general question that I can discuss. Is that why is decision being made on our behalf when there's not full participation? And I think if a decision is going to be made in Sumpford County, all of you was elected to do this to get. Why are you appeasing me?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I'm Annie Garages. And while I would like to have accurate responses, comments regarding this proposed document, I cannot. I'm not ready. It's not been provided to me. So how do we propose to become here? Our comments, objectives, comments that would benefit all of your constituents, every one of you, that would benefit Sumpford County. Not this segment, not this segment, not this segment, but inclusive. How do we, the public, make comments that we haven't been privy to read the documents?
Comments closed. Chairman? I'm going to start with a point of inquiry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, ordinance twenty-four dash one zero zero nine was introduced by the county attorney on seven twenty-three twenty-four by title only. The introduction states, "Sumpford County desires to update the sections of the Code of Ordinance applicable to meetings, rules, and order of business." Mr. Chairman, when did this body vote to undertake any action to update and abolish our rules of order as claimed in this ordinance? When did they vote? Is that a question to me? It is a question. But I'll answer it for you. Mr. Chairman, this body did not duly vote to authorize any such action as claimed by the county attorney in this wayward document. So my point of order, Mr. Chairman, is that ordinance twenty-four dash one zero zero nine introduced by the county attorney violates county ordinance eleven dash seven thirty-six in South Carolina Code forty-nine dash ten dash one twenty. Mr. Chairman, the county attorney is not a member of this body and therefore not entitled on his own accord to present any ordinance for first reading, title only. This body, Sumpford County, did not duly authorize the presentation by the county attorney pursuant to proper authority. Mr. Chairman, the county attorney should know this ordinance is out of order and that he acted without the proper authority of Sumpford County Council. Mr. Chairman, I strongly encourage you to table this audience, ordinance. Now, I just want to ask you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to push back, please show me the minutes authorizing this action. I want to see the minutes. Show me an agenda. Show me the media notification and show me the published notes. It doesn't exist. That's my first one. You can rule on that, and we'll go further. I want to see the minutes. I want to see the agenda. I want to see the date, time, place of the meeting. I want to see it all. Because it doesn't exist. Show it to me. Have it scanned and read it. All right, your next point of order. No, I want you to rule on that. We're going to go sequentially. Now, I, I gave you an option, Mr. Chairman. I didn't want to do this. I asked you, Mr. Chairman, please pull this down. Let's go back to the drawing board. You chose not to do that. And it's not going to get any easier from here. I promise you. We're going all the way down to the river.
Mr. Chairman? I think the, uh, I think the, uh, the motion, um, that was made to pull it down was to give the opportunity to afford all of this. Um, and I think, um, some of it may... And, and I need to correct something that I said. Um, in committee, the motion was made for us to go ahead and take action on, um, the first, second thing. Um, but we, um, but the motion was withdrawn because of lack of a, uh, of a second. I didn't second it. But this, um, the motion that Councilman Washington made was to just pull it down. Um, but the majority voted to not pull it down. We can look at, we can settle this right now. But we're going to get down. It doesn't, uh, take away, it doesn't take away public, public's input as a benefit. We give the public opportunity to see it. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to defer to Washington's request. Send it to the committee. Propose study and bring it back.
Pull it down.
Pull it down.
You very explain, explain to them that defer means pulling it down.
It's the same thing. Hey, pull it down. Defer being kicking it down the road.
Let's, let's table. Let's table.
It's the same thing. It's the same thing. Mr. Chairman, um, is, um, Council Bird's, uh, motion, it doesn't mean that you want to defer it or table it. There is a difference.
Yes. Defer means that it comes back at the next meeting. We may not be ready to come back at the next meeting. We may not be ready to come back at the next meeting.
I want to defer. We have a committee first, then we'll put it back on the general.
So here's what I'd like to do. I want to... I want to have a special committee, and I want to be on the committee.
Why don't you put some civil talk away? I always get involved.
Have you day workshop? Yes. By time.
Well, you don't... Just pay. Is the workshop...
Is the workshop gonna be open to the...
I'll bring it back.
No, we don't wanna do that.
No, no.
Okay, yeah, I go with you. How you talking about it?
I mean, we are transparent. It's just...
When you have committee meetings?
No, no. We're supposed to be transparent. We're supposed to give the public, uh... Access to all of the information. And so that's what is gonna happen by us, um, deferring, uh, tableing, and then it... That's it.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me... Let me just give you a little background. That some time ago, Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation with you, and I know that you had the same conversation with one of my constituents, but you got it a little bit wrong. And so I hope this explains it to the rest of council. I said to you sometime back, Mr. Chairman, that my people, people in District One, have been losing for so long and not getting what they deserve. Till at this point, they want me to fight. And if I lose, I lose. But what they expect is for me to grant, and that's what I'm gonna do. So I wanna make that statement public. Because it was... It came back to me a little bit wrong, so I wanted to fix it so everyone understands. And so... And so the way this was done was wrong. It was wrong. It was illegal. The council must have Patriot Park and Wilson Hall, and I got the authority to instructs down. No council member has the authority to do that. The attorney was wrong for presenting it in title only. And the Association of Counties says you should not introduce an ordinance in title only. The same group that you guys wanna point us back to. So I would suggest pull it down. I wanna table it.
Mr. Chairman, what... What is the urgency to do this? I mean, what... Why can't we take time and get the public involved and make sure that they are comfortable with what we are doing? What is the urgency? I mean, why does have to be done next week? What is the urgency? We've been operating under Robert's Rules of Order ever since I've been on council. So all of a sudden now, we got to have this urgent document right away. What is the urgency? What are you rectifying?
Pulling it down. That's what we're trying to do.
Now, let's pull it down and don't be putting it down for a week. Pull it down for a couple of months. Let's do something. We don't... We got... We got Robert's Rules of Order that we're working under, and we can continue to work under Robert's Rules of Order until we come back and do this properly. Hold on. Okay? Okay? Let's see how that works.
We got a motion to defer. We're not open to table. We defer as long as it takes for the workshops. It takes multiple workshops until you're satisfied, and we can bring it back.
How about... What do you think is satisfied to you?
Everybody.
I would like to second that. And to add to that, um, we have to come to, you know... I like that the reading, the wording, um, unanimous. We need to come to a unanimous consent as to when we're gonna have the meeting again to involve the public. And also decide how we are gonna give the public access to the document that we're gonna be considering for public hearing. We need to give them access whether it is electronic, which is probably the most cost-effective and, um... Or unless their request for paper copies, whatever. But we need to give access. We need to be transparent to, you know... Because we do serve at the behest of the public. We never to forget that. So I second.
We got a motion to defer until such times as we have, uh, public workshops and that all of us are satisfied. You're referring to these things.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I know everybody's cringing here, but, um... You know, I remember when Mr. Washington brought this first up about Robert's Rules. And I'm gonna be real honest with everybody out here. I've never read Robert's Rules. I mean, I... I'm elected, I'm not a politician. I don't feel like one, but I... Can I help? People... Can y'all respect me as much as you respect him and let me speak? Thank you. Um, I do... I do what I feel like the people want me to do sometimes, and sometimes I get overruled. And that's fine, and I'll apologize, but I will find a way to bring it back. This is Mr. Washington's doing here. Um, but Robert's Rules, you can throw that in the trash for me because I've seen this council spend the last six months just like this, wasting a lot of time where we could be dealing with roads, depending on what you don't support. There's a lot of other issues that I think are far more important than Robert's Rules. Uh, so, yeah, I... As long as this document does not keep the public from speaking up here as many as wants to, and as long as it is not keeping a council member from saying what they need to say, I ain't fine with it. And I hope that we can all come together and figure what you want. I just wanted to express why I voted to vote. So I appreciate your time. And I might have been out on it. I'll be wrong.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Councilman from Dazzell, I appreciate your comments, but I want you and my other colleagues up here to understand that I read Robert's Rules of Order. There is a community group, a book club group that helps me. They read Robert's Rules of Order. And the reason we do that, Councilman from Dazzell, is because we want to see rural issues move forward. And if we have to use the rules to do that, we are certainly gonna do that, whether they're Robert's Rules of Order, Mickey Mouse's Rules of Order, whatever. It doesn't matter what the rules are. And these rules that were presented today, the book club has figured out how to use those rules as well. So please understand that. It is a way to move my ball. There is no reason why people in Rimmer should have to go to the tire shop every other week because they're busting tires because of pothole. There's no reason for that. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. There's no reason for litter to be the way it is in rural areas. And let me tell you, using the rules allowed us to make progress on the litter issue. Now we have litter contractors in rural areas picking up trash around the recycling centers. We have an arrangement with the court system. So people who have been processed now pick up trash in rural areas. So it looks better. We're not there yet, but it looks better. The business license ordinance. We did not change the business license ordinance until we kept picking at it. I kept bringing it up. I used the rules to do it, and that is when it happened. There are a number of issues that require... Just because you close an issue at one meeting, that is not the end of the issue, 'cause my people still suffering. And if they're suffering, I'm suffering, and that's a problem. And that's my responsibility to deal with.
I'm not arguing with you, brother.
So I just want you to understand why I use the rules. I use the rules because people on Patriot Parkway from subdivision down don't have sidewalks. But everybody else up above, they do have sidewalks. That's a problem for me. We gotta deal with that.
Are we not dealing with some of it right now? When would rural areas?
This document that y'all produced was intended to shut me down.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, when I came on County Council in two thousand and eight, um, there was a vote, and at that time, for some reason, no one wanted to be the vice chairman. So I was voted in as vice chairman because no one wanted to jump. But when I became the vice chairman, I knew that there would be times when I had to fill in for the chair. And I made sure at that moment that I read Robert's Rules of Order from front to back two or three times, because I wanted to be able to conduct the meeting according to the guidelines that we were following. So when someone say they've never read Robert's Rules of Order, I can understand why you're so disoriented, 'cause you don't even know what's going on. Uh, and I'm not... And I'm not... Yeah, because you're saying you've never read Robert's Rules of Order, but you're saying...
Yeah, I have. But I've been on here for forty years, and I understand what the rules are. And if I'm out of order, nobody called me out of order. I never heard you call me out of order, Gene. When you were chairman.
I mean, but you're saying something about a document that you never read. I mean, so how do you know what's in it?
You read the twenty-eighth edition?
Huh?
The twenty-eighth edition. That's what Mr. Washington...
All I'm saying is that we have a document that showed us how to conduct our meeting. And we've been doing it. I don't know how long they did under Robert's Rules before I got on council, but all of us have been doing that nineteen and a half years under Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, I'm making my point right now. How much time we're spending with this, which, you know, as you say, other reported issues in the rules in Sumpert County.
You know what? Then let me say this, this kind of party, 'cause I want us to have a good understanding. We wouldn't be wasting any time if we stuck with Robert's Rules of Order. We didn't want to make hard through this, because Robert's Rules of Order was taking care of business for all this time, and no one had any problems with it. And like I said, the only reason I saw us making this document is to take control of black people that were coming here to the store. That was all.
You're all for this, Chairman. So, so... Mr. Chairman, all we want to do is... Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Mr. Chairman. So I want to say to this council that your willingness to pull this down and come back to the table and to have open dialogue like we've had tonight is a step in the right direction. And I wanna congratulate you, Mr. Chairman, on doing that. That is a step in the right direction. You could have forced it through. You chose not to do that. So I am hoping that we can all work together. Y'all know what my issues are. I know what some of y'all's issues are, but tonight was a step in the right direction.
Mr. Chairman, how many times have I had to just talk to you? How many times?
Mr. Chairman, this is just a form of privilege that clerks are trying to get your attention.
I really wanna get this right for historical purposes. Um, when there was the roll call vote, I'm going to call your name out, and what you voted wasn't like, please let me know. It was to pull the, um, ordinance down.
The first one.
Okay. That's the very first one. Nay, was Washington. Nay, Baker. Nay, Burd. Nay, McCain. Nay, Edens. Yes, McCain. Nay, Banton.
No, I wanna pull it down. Pull it down.
That was the first one down. That was the first one. It was just a question and second.
We got a motion in the second on the floor to defer until such times when we got a lot of workshops and come up with and all of this. And we can come together.
And decide unanimously when we will revisit it.
Any further discussion? All these things, we say aye.
Mr. Chairman of the council, there's a building located sixteen oh five North Pike East. It's a abandoned building for all practical purposes. I think you've seen the information received with the landing. It shows the photographs. It shows that according to the city's Sumpert Water Department, it's been no active water account at property for the last five years. Uh, Mr. Hill, which got a letter from... A letter from Kirk Moore from Dewright LLC, the prior owner, prior to the acquisition by Highland Capelhones. Highland Capelhones, you're acknowledging this as a venue. Uh, building so they can take advantage of an income tax credit, not a property tax credit, but an income tax credit. Do you guys have any questions?
Move for approval.
Sir.
We approve resolution twenty-four. All in favor of this guy? On the twenty-four one oh eight third reading. Mr. Bryant?
No changes to second reading, Mr. Chairman. That, uh, easily to allow the, uh, order line to be moved on process.
Move for second reading.
Second. The move is probably second. We have bird reading on partners twenty-four one oh eight. Discussion here in... All in favor, please say aye. Committee reports fiscal tax and property committee in need. All members were present. Uh, documents presented. Go further discussion. If there's any bad ideas, everybody go and pray out of that. Public works solidly.
Public works met. We discussing product routes. Um, we had a lot of discussion, and I think that this discussion was going well, but we all had some different ideas. And, uh, I think I heard some things that I was kind of against, and I heard some things that I was far. So, uh, I do think there's some little ground there to be found, and I think we'll just have to continue whatever. And hopefully we can come up with a solution to this. And it was just all discussion, mate. That's my report.
Report from council members on other meetings, frame of conferences.
Mr. Chairman, I just add to Councilman Baker's comments. I think that's accurate. Um, there were, um, some solutions that were put on the table that were not as appetizing as we would have liked for them to have been. And so we're gonna continue trying to trim the part off that we don't like, but we, um... We have made some progress. We've gone from not even having a discussion about addressing these issues with folks who've been taxpayers for a long time to trying to figure out how we can help them. And, um, all council members participated in the conversation, which is also good. And so we're gonna keep scratching at it. I assure you that, um, this councilman will not let it go. And I think I have the Councilman from Dazzell's commitment, um, that he is engaged to the end. So we are making some progress, but we're not there yet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I also add, because I would like for the public to know that I support us finding solutions for the dirt roads that we have in this county. for the, the dirt roads that we have in this county. Yeah, and, and, um, and we had really good conversations. And, um, and, and sometimes it got pretty uncomfortable, just like it gets out here sometimes. But that's, um, we grow from hearing, um, other people's thoughts and, and opinions. You know, if we sit quietly and never say anything, then you'll never know what the other person has on his or her mind. And so we have to have a strong back, strong shoulders to be able to accept what other people have to say and be able to flesh out the difference. And hopefully with all these issues that we have to, to face, that we can be, um, gentlemen and women to write some really viable resolutions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Reports, monthly reports.
Council members, the only one to report I have was the public works department. And that is the July report.
Thank you. County Minister.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to take this opportunity, one, to acknowledge dedicated county workforce. Uh, as many of you in the community are obviously aware, uh, last week, we went through a terrible tropical storm in our area. Actually a hurricane that actually hit our coast and that in Florida. Um, but the, uh, just to give you an idea of the impact of Hurricane Debbie, uh, it was for this area basically a four day event. Um, we had, uh, our offices closed here, the county workforce with non-essential personnel on Thursday. Uh, the schools closed Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday as a precaution, primarily because of the bus traffic and the needs there. But I certainly support all their efforts and recognize them. Uh, the rain totals, uh, best we could tell, uh, averaged from about eight inches in some portions of our county, uh, down to about two inches in some of the lower portions of our county, with the majority being somewhere between five and six inches of rain over that four day total. Um, while there was no major damage, uh, no dam issues, which we had in previous, um, weather events, a lot of that was due to a lot of cost saving measures that were taken, not only with the, the dams that Sumpire County controls, but throughout our community. I see everybody working together, I think certainly pays huge benefit. And we're still monitoring the river system primarily over in the Lanchis River, uh, at the eastern portion, and I've been, uh, keeping Ms. McCain aware of that situation. But it does look like it's kind of leveling out now, based on the information we're receiving about the river flows north of Sumpire. We did have, uh, some neighborhood, minor neighborhood flooding, but most of that certainly didn't get into any major property damages, which were very unfortunate. Again, I want to thank Commercial Operations Center, Don Do and her staff, reporting in the community where we have law enforcement, EMS, fire, postal works, stormwater, everybody meeting on a regular basis to kind of cover the issues related to that event. And the hard work and kind of particularly, I think, with, uh, work technology, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comment? Anyone wishing to speak to the council, please proceed to the podium. Public comment is open. State your name, put a record, please.
My name is Jackie Hughes and I live in Sumpire County. Good evening, Chairman McCain, county council members and my fellow citizens. I am attended the last county council meeting three weeks ago. Is with great sadness that I stand here tonight to say what I have to say. This is a saying that goes, there is a saying that goes like this. What is good for the goose is good for the gander. But in my case, it is what is good for two geese is good for the other geese. It is about something that has been going on for a while. It starts with county council, with a county council member telling us that he is representing his constituents. Then he goes on to give a speech about whatever is on his mind for the night. At first I thought it was great that he cared enough for his constituents, that he would do all the research and even take pictures, et cetera, to let everyone know the situation he was trying to bring before council. But now it seems that it happens almost every council meeting. That led me to wonder why his constituents were so demanding. I don't remember the past representative having so many concerns. Maybe that is why he wasn't reelected, maybe not. I also thought, why are his constituents making all these demands and having all these concerns? I know that I have a wish list, but I also know that my wish list is just that, my wish list. Why would I believe that my wishes should be fulfilled at the expense of other taxpayers in the county? By the way, I have contacted my councilman several times and he has responded to my concerns. I believe that he represents me in a very responsible way. So that, so then I started wondering why all this was happening. What is going on? Although I believe that it is admirable, admirable that he, and he has his constituents in mind, why does it have to be a confrontation almost every week? I finally figured it out. I think that person wants to be in the center instead of on the ends. And yes, I didn't say the ends. Be careful what you wish for, you might get it. And you may figure out that the position isn't as great as you thought it would be. Being in power or in charge brings more responsibility. There will be others that confront your imagined power. There will be problems in this county that cannot be solved because there just isn't enough money for everyone's wish list. I hope that we can soon get back to having meetings where everyone respects everyone else. If not in person, then in position, instead of trying to fulfill everyone's wish list. P.S. I often remember what a good Democrat president, John F. Kennedy, said back once, January twentieth nineteen sixty-one. He said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." I want to change that to, "Ask not what your county can do for you, ask what you can do for your county." Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Sandra Burgess. And, um, what I would like to say is that, um, and District Six, um, is the district that I'm in, the Turkey Creek, um, community. I am really disappointed at what I'm seeing here today. Um, all of the infighting and so forth. Um, there has to be rules and orders to everything. I understand the transparency and I appreciate the gentleman that said he's not read the Robert, um, um, Rule of Orders. But if you're gonna serve an organization, you've got to read the rules. Because there needs to be rules that are implemented in every organization, whether it be civic, governmental, church business, because if you're a deep in a church or on the board of any organization, you have to read the rule. Other than that, you're gonna be making up stuff. And black, red, white or green, we can't make up stuff. Because if we wanna make up stuff, let's make up stuff about all these bodies that we're finding. Let's make up stuff about all these abandoned homes in these communities that are being used for drug activities. Let's talk about all of these food trucks in these areas that are creating a lot of issues for some of our communities. Let's talk about those things. Let's talk about how we're going to implement programs and things that are gonna make this county better. I'm not hearing it, I'm very disappointed. And as a voter and as one, my voice will not be silenced. It will not, I will tell you that right now. Because so many people fought for that right, for me to be able to speak. And that's what I am going to do. And if I vote for you, you are my voice. And if you're not seeing what it is that I think is gonna represent us as an entire people, I do agree. It needs to be for everybody, black, red, white, we all live in Sumpire, South Carolina, we are one. And until you all get it together, the head gets it together, the body's gonna be messed up. And that's why we are all messed up. And I'm really disappointed. And the people you show up every week like this, whenever you all have any, we need to show up every meeting like this to make you all accountable for what you do. Because I promise you, I promise you that I will be back. And I'm in District Six and I don't like what's going on. If I'm a business owner and other businesses are coming in there, um, disturbing the community and they don't have a license and I have to have a license, we got a problem. If they're dumping bodies down the street and vacant homes that nobody is claiming and cleaning up, we've got a problem. We've got to fix it ourselves, but you all are gonna have to get it together. Because I'm not liking what I'm seeing. And I don't wanna run. But somebody has to be accountable.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I'm Frances Bennett. I live at six to seven twenty Glen Lane in Redford. And I really appreciate everything that Mr. Washington is doing. And I'm thankful that we don't have freedom of speech. And I understand what you're saying, but it's not a wish list that we have. What we have is a need. I have a picture that I have here where my niece came to visit me on Sunday. And I'm talking about, this is right here from my house. That her father had to come and pull her out with a tractor. I can't even drive down my road to go to my house. I have to go through my granddaughter's yard to come across to get to my house. There, there's a section that I can't travel. This is, this is what it looks like and I can show it to all of you. It's not something that you really look forward to doing, but you gotta figure out how you're gonna get to your house. I have a husband who's on dialysis. Three days out of the week, he's an absentee. If he needs an emergency vehicle to get to him, he doesn't have that between to live right off the side of five twenty one. They have to come down this road where there's holes and you go like this and you come back like that. I would invite any of you to come and take a ride. I'll drive you down it. It's no joke, so it's not a wish list. It's a necessity. These roads are horrible. And I understand what you're saying, you guys are working on it, I understand it's gonna take time. But we need to know what's the progress. Cause with all this rain that came, there's more rain to come. And it's not gonna make it easier. So I ask that you please listen to us. We're not just saying something because we want to be in the front. He's saying things like this because we on his back. He's gonna hear it from us. And I hope that your, your people in your districts do the same thing to you. And that's the way we will get things done. Thank you very much.
Again, I'm Annie Erick. And while I've heard the positives and the negatives, I know, I know that in the midst of all of this, this common ground, this common ground, them calling won't get it done. Pointing here, listing things that have been asked for. Asking for is good. Getting is better. You were all elected to your positions. You were elected to fight for us. To fight our battles for us. We come here to be a voice for everyone, for everyone. Your constituents, Sir Baker, my representative, my councilman, each and every one of you. I've had with an awesome responsibility. And yes, we sit here sometimes and we call names and we talk out of turn. We don't wanna listen. And sometimes we listen a little bit too much, too too little. I applaud each and every one of you in your respective positions. Because ultimately, we all live in Sumpire County. We are all representative of Sumpire County. That's the larger picture. So while we go out and look at other counties and other businesses and other bad, Sumpire County, I implore all of us to remember together, we do what? Stand. Division. We fall. Falling sometimes is not easy to get up. So while we are, let's continue to reach up and understand and accept. We will all never agree on everything. But we try our best to agree on those things that are important to the majority of us. And then we pull those others up with us. May God continue to bless you and keep you and keep you encouraged in your respective roles as you are challenged by us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lorraine Palmer. And, uh, I haven't been here in a while. But when I saw the article in the paper about yada, 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 I didn't understand what that meant. Look, there's things that are gonna be changed as far as the, um, the actions and behavior of people that come, but it, it didn't make any sense for me. It's like, well, what did they say? What, what are they talking about? I had to sit. So anyway, I understand the confusion now. And, um, everybody that spoke was very direct and dynamic and very opinionated. And, um, the only thing that I could think of really is taxes. Everybody doesn't pay the same amount of taxes. But we all have to pay road taxes. We drive on roads that have been clogged like red lines. What, where do you have to live in order to have your road fixed? Some, some roads are, they're built possible to build in right away. We can wait. I put in a claim for the, the knuckle coming off my tire and getting stranded out on the street. And the guy came through trying to find out what had happened there. I wasn't on that street. I was turning into a business. And it felt like, it sounded like I ran over a curb, there was no curb there. I got out and looked, there was nothing there. I tried to drive and almost hit the car that was parked in the parking lot already because I didn't have any steering on the left side. So I called my husband. And it's like, okay, where do you have to be? And what kind of taxes do you have to pay? To get service right away. Where do you have to live? And it's, it's so unclear, I know they're working on it. But the guy told me, you think you get your community together and do another petition and have anybody, any relatives that come and visit you, have them sign the petition too, the petition too. And it's like, nobody wants to come out here. My grandson got stuck. I got stuck. People next door get stuck. And it, it just doesn't make any sense. But anyway, like I was saying, the only thing I could think about was yada, yada, yada and taxes. And it doesn't make sense that we, uh, we, we have to live like this because we don't have a certain, you don't make a, a certain amount of money in our tax bracket to live in a certain area where the first little thing is gonna be, okay, the first little thing is gonna be this stuff. But, um, thank you for listening, I hope everybody will, and it's good to be back and see so many people here around you.
Mr. Chairman, would you ask her to? Mr. Chairman, would you guys, please, wait right there till this meeting's over? I wanna clear out.
Uh, once again, Barbara Washington, uh, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just say, I think I calmed down some. But, uh, sitting through, uh, some of these meetings, it is challenging. And throughout the week, um, it's gonna be even more challenging. But I wanted to say that I've heard some of the best discussions, uh, tonight than I have in a long time, both in the committee meeting and, uh, in tonight's, uh, meeting. And it's my hope that, you know, these won't be empty words and moments that you will continue to work together collectively to do the people's work. And I just wanna clarify, um, in case, you know, and then my husband sits on one of the ends. He is not interested in the middle, um, at all. I can, you know, tell you that is not a goal. And in fact, you know, he might have to get another helpmate, um, if that were to happen. We are at, we, our plate is full. Um, you know, Carlton didn't even, this was not something he wanted to do, or something he was asked to do, um, because his community helped raise him, and he owed something to them. And like Ms. Meredith said, it's not, you know, these aren't like, you know, something that people want out of the ordinary. They just want basic services. And I don't think that that's something you should have to wish for. It's like air, you know, it's something you kind of expect when you walk out to be able to get in your car and drive down the road. But that doesn't happen for a lot of people. So I just, you know, hope that we can figure out ways to make sure that people's necessities, the basic stuff that we should be doing, are done. Thank you.
I make a mention to the journalists, but during this waiting, right, Mr. County, the last several months, and I'll be real brief. I've got several close friends and people I didn't realize were gonna commit suicide. So, and I got a call Sunday morning, I'm in church. Family friend, I can't remember if it ended his life, the night before. So I just wanted, please, y'all, anyone feeling these thoughts, call, get some help. Ask me, I'm not a professional, but I'll talk to you. Call nine eight eight, that's number four that. Or please seek help, because suicide's not the answer. And I make a mention to the journalist.